Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle and Counselor Fisher are absent this evening.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the council minutes from June 8th, 2016. Were there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
A move for approval is written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the June 8th, 2016 regular session minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Council minutes are approved. Consent calendar, you'll notice that we have a revised agenda with two of the items, Parks Entry Committee Board postponed to the next meeting, and everything else stands.
Move for approval is amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Consent calendar is approved. Okay, I have a couple proclamations tonight. The first is the Americans with Disabilities Act. On July 26th, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. This legislation established a clear and comprehensive nationwide mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. On July 26th, 2016, we will celebrate the anniversary of the signing of the ADA. The ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life. However, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. On the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, join the City of Lebanon in celebrating and recognizing the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby affirm to continue to work toward full ADA compliance. And that's one that's close to my heart. And we have National Night Out, August 2nd, 2016. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 2nd, 2016 entitled National Night Out. Whereas annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Lebanon, Oregon to join forces with other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Lebanon plays a vital role in assisting the Lebanon Police Department through local joint crime prevention efforts and by supporting National Night Out in Lebanon. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Lebanon be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crimes. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016 as National Night Out in our city and call upon all citizens of Lebanon to join the Lebanon Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting our annual National Night Out. Is our chief going to be in the dump tank this year?
I am.
Yep.
Very good.
And Bowlin, actually, he just volunteered.
Oh, Counselor Bowlin, excellent, excellent. Well, we look forward to that. That's an awesome time for the community to come together and look forward to the National Night Out. And next up, if I were mayor, contest recognition of award recipients. And we have the first place winner here, and we have Emily Salinas. If you want to come forward, Emily. And we have Gwynn, is it Berklin?
Yes.
Berklin, from Pioneer School. And I forgot to mention Emily is from Greenacre School. And if you'll come on up, we'll have, present you with these. Okay.
You guys come on.
So.
Come up closer.
You are Emily, I bet, okay. And then this is your...
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay. And Gwynn, you get something like $50. Okay, I'll come over here. We'll take a picture of all three of us together. Yeah, turn your certificates around so that they can see.
I can see.
Very good.
Let's put this behind. Okay, guys ready? Ready, I'm gonna take a few just to make sure I get everyone's happy. Nice. One more. Awesome. Congratulations. Go ahead.
Congratulations. See ya.
All right.
And this could be one of our future mayors right here. Very good. Thank you, girls. What's that? Yeah, could be. Okay, at this point, we have public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items discussed at the earlier work session or any other city business. This council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at the speaker's request. Did we have anybody signed up? Okay, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Okay, did you, Wyatt? Come on down.
Good evening, council. My name is Wyatt King, and I am insurance agent at RKI Insurance and pretty involved in the community. And I am here today, surprise, surprise, to talk about the marijuana ballot that is going to be going out. And just want to say that this is not about advocating for either way. This is purely about making sure we give the people of Lebanon the information they need to make the right decision. I read over the measure of the text and everything in the packet, and I had a few concerns. And I did provide one copy of the concerns to Linda. My first one is that there seems to be hardly any mention of the tax implications of this. And that's why I provided the article, Oregon on track to collect 43 million in pot taxes. And that's a big number. We were originally projected to, I think, max out at maybe 3 million. And so there is a lot more money at play than anybody originally anticipated. And I know that it's hard to get firm numbers, but even a conservative low-ball number at least gives the people of Lebanon something to make a decision on. In the same regards, there is no projected tax revenue for the local sales tax. And I know that it can be hard to come up with these numbers, but just spitballing myself, we have about 4 million Oregonians, about 40 million in tax revenue, which boils down to about 10 bucks per person, with 16,000 Lebanese. That's about 160,000, but we don't get the whole thing. I think we get like 10%. 16,000. Might not be much, but it's something. Could be cameras for downtown. It could be raises for police or firefighters. It's more money to help our city budget, and I don't think we should leave it on the table, but that's my opinion. At the very least, I think that it should be on the ballot in any way that we can to help give people the information they need. For the local sales tax, if we could find three communities that are similar and are doing these, we can get a per capita average times by Lebanon's population and at least have something so people know what they're dealing with. I also thought that people should know on the ballot measure that Lebanon did approve it. I know that it was a slight margin, I think 51% or something like that, but Lebanon did approve it. And so I think that that's important for our people to know, that when they're going in to vote on this, it is kind of a second vote. And now granted, the measure of the law says we did not get 55%, so our city council was fully within their rights to do this. And I actually don't mind that we're putting it to another vote to make it a firm once and for all decision. But I think that the people should know that. Then last but not least, we need to make it clear beyond doubt what a vote means. And I respect that it's mentioned about five times, I think, in the text of the ballot that no means you're supporting legalization, yes means you want to uphold the ban. But if we could just put a yes equals no recreational, no means yes recreational, or it's confusing even when I try and simplify it, something to help people out so we don't have any kind of after the fact, well, I didn't understand that no meant supporting it, or I didn't understand that yes meant we were going to ban it. I think that these are simple things that we could come up with and get on the text of the ballot, and it'll just keep people informed and make it so whatever we decide, people are happy with it. Maybe not happy with it, but they understand that that's the way the people of Lebanon voted, and there aren't really things to argue about. Because the last thing that I want to see is this to be a big drawn-out issue where people are nitpicking over it for five, 10 years. Let's get them the information. Let's get a decision, and then we'll be able to move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt. Anyone else like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the regular session. Number one, water treatment plant project bid alternative proposal, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As you were in our work session, we kind of went through this a little bit, but what we have before you tonight is a recommendation that council pass a motion to allow us to pursue a construction manager, general contractor contract for the new water treatment plant. Give you a little bit of background, you know, we obviously opened bids, they were too high. We've investigated other approaches to this, whether it be a regular design bid-build, go back to a redesign. And our feeling is that we need to get to a point where we get a contractor on board and start controlling the costs of the project and bring it down. One of the things, you know, I've listed out a few bullet points here that we didn't cover in our work session. A CMGC, if we get one on board, will help us, we can develop a team with a contractor and with corolla engineers ourselves and anybody else that we feel would add value to this and value engineer that project down to a dollar value that we can fit within our budget. We've got the plans and specifications completed. Those are done. That's what we value engineer from. So that makes very little, if any, redesign. Obviously, there'd be some drawing changes as we value engineer stuff, but it's an open book process, contains a fixed markup percentage for the entire project for the construction All aspects of the project are put out for competitive quotes, so once you get your construction manager on board, then he's quoting out things that, you know, electrical, SCADA, all that stuff, it all gets quoted out. So we get to see that, and we get to see it with his markup. So nothing changes there. And I think it probably eliminates potential for big change orders. So there's that, and that's big in and of itself. You know, the contractor's part of the team that comes together with a guaranteed maximum price, and it eliminates not all, but for the most part, most of your big change orders. There's no big surprises unless there's some major changed condition. Should you approve this, basically per ORS 279-C335, we would prepare findings. There's a set of findings that we have to find. Those have to be made available to the public 14 days in advance of a public hearing. So we'd notify of a public hearing. Our proposal would be to hold that public hearing on August 10th, city council meeting. At that time, basically, that's where we'd be asking, we'd present the findings that would exempt us from public bidding and go through that process. From there, on the 15th of August, we would, which is a Monday, we would put an RFP out for CMGC contract, send it out, we'd advertise it just like we would any other project, put that out. And then in September, we would review, score RFPs, and then hopefully come back by October, the October 12th meeting, and have a recommendation to you for a CMGC contractor. Any questions I can answer about any of that?
Ron, there aren't any restrictions on geographically where those could go?
No, no. We would advertise most likely in the DJC, which is where we do most of our advertising, and hit the paper. The question comes down to a likely scenario is the few contracting firms that do CMGC that already bid the project, I mean, they're likely to be really interested in this. There's a lot of others that do it out there, but there's no guarantee that they would actually do it, you know? But again, I don't think we're stifling competition in any way, even if we only got one RFP back. We know what that price is, and we're going to set in our RFP that if you don't think you can get to this price, then don't even submit a proposal. We're going to try and get those prices down. And then from there, we're going to work even harder to get the project down even more if we can. So that's our proposal.
One of the values that this provides for us, in my experience, is the opportunity to, when you go through the process, to look at various percentage stages of the project and be able to provide that feedback
Right.
to staff and to the council as to what those costs are. So it eliminates the surprise factor at the end, where you end up with just one sticker shock.
Yeah.
The opportunity, the built-in strength of this is that you know along during the process, which gives us an opportunity to go out for other revenue opportunities during that development process so that the two can be concurrent and save time.
Any other questions?
I know my experience over the years with that concept with the corporate world was that you, you had a team that was walking in the same direction.
Absolutely.
And you see data upfront quicker and more effective than the process that we took. So I'm all excited about the process.
I just want to make a few comments. As a counselor, I completely understand where, how we got here, why we're here, why we're changing gears, and I absolutely empathize with staff, Ron and Rob and your team. I know what the stress and the work that you guys have put into this have been astronomical, and I am appreciative of that. But I have a, I have an advantage. I have an inside view, you know? When I, if I stepped over there and I sat in the audience in the gallery and I put on my taxpayer hat, I, as a taxpayer, I don't think I could be more disappointed with this project and where it's at and more frustrated with it because, for all the reasons that we talked about in the work session, it's, this looks like an absolute loser, and it looks bad for us, and it makes, it makes you, as a city, look bad when really you're just doing the best that you can do with the circumstances that you have. The community is likely, around the water cooler, not going to understand the intricacies of this. They're not going to understand the backstories, and unfortunately, we are all going to take the hit for that. And I don't know that there's anything we could have done to avoid this. And that's the, that's the most frustrating part to me is, you know, if something's going to go wrong, how do we avoid that in the future? How do we, how do we not make that same mistake twice? And I just don't think there's anything we could have done to avoid that.
No, looking back, I don't think I would have changed anything we did.
No. And so, but again, I know that, I know that staff, and I know that the council, and I know that the mayor is going to take an absolute beating over this likely at some point or throughout the process, but I still feel in my heart of hearts that what we're doing is the right thing, it's a responsible thing, and it's the absolutely necessary thing. And I applaud you guys for what you have put into this, because I know it's been extremely difficult, probably the most difficult project you've ever had here.
Probably.
Give or take. But, that being said, I just, I feel an obligation to speak on behalf of the public that this is not going to sit well, and it's not going to look good. But there's nothing we can do other than be honest and be forthright and be transparent about what happened and why it happened and how we're going to try to recover from it. So...
And I would agree with you on that, and we've talked internally about that as staff and how we come out of this. It needs to be done gracefully, and it needs to be done openly, and that's the reason for tonight's work session. So that the council can see that. I know we didn't have anybody from the public here at the work session, which is a rarity for that to happen anyway, but at least they can go back and we can look at that and we can get that out in the open. And as your constituents hit you up, they'll know, yeah, it's unfortunate, it's an unfortunate situation that we're in, but how we come out of it, and if we come out of it gracefully, will say a lot. So that's the direction we want to head.
Thank you to you guys for your work, and we'll move forward.
Well said, Jason. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I move for the approval of this CMGC process.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward with the CMGC process for the contract for the new water treatment plant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Thanks again for all your work and your staff. Number two, amendment to park exclusion ordinance, Jessica Meyer, legal counsel.
Better turn my microphone on.
Push that little button there.
I think it's on now. This is ordinance bill number 2016-13, a bill for an ordinance amending section 12.14.040 of the Lebanon Municipal Code regarding exclusion from city parks for violation of the Lebanon Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Okay, and this apparently just has one change, adding a designee of the chief of police in the, I think in the beginning section there, A.
A.
Section A. It's that one word. And I'm assuming that that would be for our community service officer or someone like that?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that makes sense. Any questions?
No.
Discussion? Okay, we've had the ordinance read.
Move for the approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve bill number 2016-13. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you, Jessica. Number three, the voter referrals on local recreational marijuana ban and taxation.
This is resolution number 2016-24, a resolution approving referral to the electors of the City of Lebanon, the question of banning recreational marijuana producers, recreational marijuana processors, recreational marijuana wholesalers, and recreational marijuana retailers within the City of Lebanon.
Any questions or discussion on this?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-24. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. And the train will pass eventually. We'll pause just for a moment for that. Okay, and if the council will read the second ordinance?
This is ordinance bill number 2016-14, an ordinance of the City of Lebanon imposing a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana, items by a marijuana retailer and a referring ordinance.
Questions or discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 2016-14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I'm sorry, the ordinance passes. And lastly, if you would read resolution 2016-25.
Yes, resolution number 2016-25. This is a resolution approving referral to the electors of the City of Lebanon, the question of imposing a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana, items by a marijuana retailer within the City of Lebanon.
Questions or discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-25. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Number four, Lynn County lease agreement, Dean Baugh.
If you don't know, we leased the upstairs of our bill, the city hall building to the Lynn County court facilities. They, they've been leasing there for, well, since before I got here, so at least the last seven years. So we've had that contract. So we're in the process of renewing our contract with them. There's a couple of changes on this contract. The previous contract had a, was a three-year contract with a deadline. We're asking for this contract to be, like, a big open-end contract with a six-month, we, we can request it or they can request it, a six-month to get out of it. We're, we're increasing the monthly rent to $567, and then it'll increase each year by the cost of living. They also pay 23% of the utilities for the building, so their lease each month is about 1,100 bucks when they pay for utilities also. Part of their lease is also a small room down right next to Ron's office, so Ron has the pleasure of people in orange jumpsuits and stuff walking by his office, sitting out there all the time. He feels right at home, so...
What's the current rent?
The current rent, we raised it this year by, I think it was 550. And it used to be, before this last lease, we had no, we had no rent. It was basically, they paid utilities. So with the last lease, we got the, it went from $500 to 550 over the three years, and now we've just added a colon to it, so it'll have an automatic, automatic colon each year, so it'll go up a little bit. And then again, like I said, they paid 23% of the utilities of the building.
What's the approximate square footage on that, Dean?
I knew you were going to ask. I want to say it's like 3,500 square feet, something like that.
Yeah.
Pretty good size.
Yeah, it's a pretty good size.
Yeah, it's a good price.
You know, they used to share it with our court system until ours moved down to the new building, then they took over the whole area.
It says here in the lease that it's 3,355, 54.
Okay, that was close.
Pretty close.
Paul Park. Any other questions?
I think the extra part of it is that little building part downstairs when they did that.
Mayor, I move for approval. Second.
Go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the lease with Lynn County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dean. Next up, amending resolution 2016-16, levying taxes for the City of Lebanon fiscal year.
So this one should be even faster. Each year, we have to come back in July to amend the resolution we passed in June, and this is due to the way the state does their, their numbers. We have to have a tax resolution in place by June 30th or we don't be, aren't allowed to collect taxes. But we can't report to them delinquent sewer and delinquent storm drain charges until July 1st, because they have, because of what, the way the state law works, they have until June 30th at midnight to pay those, those taxes. So on July 1st, Theresa goes through and figures out who hasn't paid them. And so then, so we have to come back at the first meeting in July, amend the resolution, and I have to run it to the county tomorrow, because it's got to be to the county by the 15th of the month, so we can collect the taxes on those also. So that's basically what this is, it's amending... So that's basically what this is, it's amending the resolution we passed in June, adding the delinquent sewer charges of 56,805.3, delinquent storm drain charges of $4,252.82. That will be the staff report.
Questions?
And there are liens in place for this amount?
Yes, that, right now, they're all, this, this, this is on their sewer bill, so what will happen once we turn this over to the county, Teresa then goes in and takes the, this, this off their bill, so their bill will reduce by this amount, because we've turned it over to the county, it'll be on their tax bill. So, so their year's worth of sewer will just disappear and go to the county. We also, when it goes to the county, we add $100 administrative fee, so for some of these people, they, it's a $76 a month sewer-only bill, and then we add $100 at the end when it goes to the county.
Okay, entertain a motion?
No, you've got a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a resolution. And can we have the, oh, I get.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, if you would.
Resolution number 2016-26, a resolution amending section one of resolution number 16, parentheses, 2016, levying taxes fiscal year 2016 through 17, to include delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2016-16. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you, Jessica. And number six, League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priority Survey. Thank you, Dean. Okay, this is, hopefully you had a chance to look at this. Our city manager went ahead and pulled out of the, the full list towards the back of the priorities that he felt were the top priorities for the city, and gave us some choices, so what we need to do is, as council, each of us counselors, give our top four choices, Linda will record those, and then we will forward whatever our agreement is to the League of Oregon Cities. So there are one, two, you have seven priorities that the city manager, it could be any from the list in the back if you saw anything else. I looked through them, and I thought the city manager's list was quite good for what our, our community needs are. I'll go ahead and start. The, the ones that I felt are the most important is number one, the item J, local lodging tax. The third one, restore recreational immunity, that was the one we had discussed about the person on a playground or something that got injured, and that's, I think that's an important one for our city. The next one, item O, continue marijuana legalization implementation, and then item S is the, the pers reform. I think that's an important thing for our city with the amount of money that's involved there. Those are my four. Did you get those okay, Linda? Okay? How about, Robert? Yes, correct.
Yeah, I agree with three of your four choices. Instead of the marijuana implementation, I would recommend item Z, the transportation funding.
Okay.
So instead of, oh, you're saying C?
Z, correct.
That, that would be my change as well.
I'd go along with that, too.
Okay. And Councilor Bowlin?
I liked I, J, O, and going with L on that as well.
Which one is I?
J, M, O, S.
Did you say I?
Aye.
Aye.
Eliminate property tax.
Gotcha, property tax reform. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay, do you have everything that you need from us, Linda?
So how do we come up with one set of recommendations from the city, then?
Well, that's, she's.
We have three counselors who agree on all of them, so.
So we need to pick one more.
Everybody chose J.
Okay.
And everybody chose O.
Okay.
No, I didn't choose O.
Oh, I'm sorry, everyone.
But you chose L, didn't you, which is similar.
It wasn't O.
No.
Z.
I said J.
J and F, C.
J, M. Z.
And an S?
An S.
Okay.
And that's what Tom Siskel and Eliot said.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So are those, what are the four, then, that got the most votes?
S and Z.
S and Z, okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Does anybody want to?
Yeah.
You know, I guess I'd ask the question of the other counselors about J and the lodging tax. Aren't we generally following in line with what the other communities are doing?
We are, we're, we're following it where it's used for tourism and, and the very specifics, and I think what they've talked about in the League of Oregon Cities is making it a little broader, that it could be used for other things. And I think that's what, that, the, the concept is that the League of Oregon Cities.
Broadening this.
Broadening it a little bit more, so that it would be a little bit more of a definition.
And I think that, and the reason I supported that, is I, I think that gives us some flexibility with where we're going with our strategic planning.
Mm-hmm.
And it just, if, if there is some flexibility of allocating those dollars.
Yeah.
I think we would want that down the road.
I like the flexibility, yes.
Yeah.
I'm on H, J.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, then we will send that off to the League of Oregon Cities and give them our legislative priorities for 2017. City manager's report, if you had a chance to read that, it's like always, very nice and complete. I guess Gary's not here, so we really don't, can't have any questions, so we'll just move on. Lastly, we'll have items from council. I have one quick thing. Next week, I'll be gone to the mayor's conference, the Oregon Mayors Association Conference, and it's, it's in a rough place, and it's going to be very difficult to go, but it's going to be in Lincoln City. I'll force myself to go.
That's a tough.
It is a tough one, it's a tough.
Yeah.
Last year, it was in Cottage Grove, and this year, I'm really looking forward to the Lincoln City, because also, next year, it's going to be here, and I want to get as many tips and ideas and thoughts of how, how we can make it even better here, because it's going to be pretty fun when we have it in our community, and be able to show the other mayors what we're doing in Lebanon, so. Anything else from council?
I understand we're being blessed with another pizza parlor.
I have heard that, yes, I have. And a coffee sit-down place.
Yes, donuts and coffee.
And, and you can get your cellphone recharged over there, too, and buy a new cellphone.
Where's this pizza? I haven't heard anything about it yet.
The old Popeyes.
Yes, yeah.
Popeyes, okay.
It's going to be Domino's, yeah, Domino's.
Oh, okay. Good, we finally get something in that building again.
I'm just real pleased to see the, the Ford building, something happened with that. That, that corner just, has left really crummy lately.
Yeah.
Or for a long time, actually.
I sure wish that we could get the owners to cut down the weeds in the front window of that, it's been that way all last year.
Yeah.
It's that way now, and.
I think construction's supposed to.
There's a code about that, isn't there?
Yeah, but that, Jason, get his weed eater, go do it.
No, it's, it's all, yeah, it's all me.
Okay, we have a last opportunity for the public to make comments. Anybody from the public like to speak? Go ahead, come on up.
Yes, Mr., oh, I got the wrong one there. But. I'm Ronald Hartung, and I've come down to make a little complaint about what's going on in our city. And I've been having a problem for four years with Kevin over at the station about getting the sidewalks on the west side of Main Street all done down to South Gate, the old South Gate, and because there are so many ruts in there, in the lines that go across on the sidewalk, there ain't no lines there anymore, it's big ditches going across them, and it's kind of hard on me, because I have torn cartleages in my shoulders, and I have four discs in my neck that are out of place, and they're killing me all the time. And I love to go down that way, due to the fact that I go to Apple Tree, and I go all the way out to Walmart, but out there where Mama's is, is the last half a block past that, that needs the work done, and I've been trying to get it done for five years, and for four years, Kevin and I have both talked about it, and I've given him all the addresses and everything else last year, and he still hasn't done anything, or even, as far as I know, he hasn't talked to anybody, and I would like to see it get done to where I can handle the sidewalk myself, especially down at the Y. That's the worst part of it, right there, and then in front of the subway, the new subway, and, and it starts at just the other side of the, again, on the other side of Airport Road, going out to McDonald's and the Mama's, and across to halfway, well, to the first driveway, the first driveway to the old, to the, what do they call it, Dollar Tree and all them stores out there.
South Gate.
The Shurys.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, that needs it real bad, but other than that, it's the rest of the way out to Walmart is A1, and we've got to do something about this, because I'm not the only one that's complaining. There's a lot of people in power chairs and scooters that are trying to complain, and they all come to me. I'm their get-up-and-go man, I guess.
I'm confused as to what we're talking about. Are you talking about the sidewalk?
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk quality.
So, okay.
Yeah, the accessibility, essentially, because the sidewalks are really chewed up.
Okay.
Ron, I'll address this. First of all, Kevin is an enforcement officer, so he's, that's not really his job to make it happen. His job is to enforce it, so.
Yeah, but he should have turned it into you guys.
Well, I understand. Being in a wheelchair myself, I'm pretty cognizant of this issue, too, because it's, it affects all of us, the strollers, people.
I don't mind, you know.
All types of people with disabilities.
I'd like to see it get done, so we'd have a place for us people, the handicap people, to get to where we want to go.
Right. So I've made it real clear to our city manager that with our vision process, that I want to make sure that our downtown and our main strip is wheelchair-accessible. I can't even go from my home to downtown without having to go out into the street, because there's no curb cuts. So the downtown area is an area that will probably have an urban renewal district at some point soon, and we're trying.
I can get on the other side of the highway, and I'll, and you can stay on this side, and I'll race you down to the other end.
I'll do it. Of course, you'll beat me with the electric.
Yeah, let's just see how good it is.
But that is an important thing, and as.
I'll probably already have two cups of coffee in me by the time you get there.
As we're working on our downtown and, and that's, the whole strip all the way up Main Street, we'll be working on that, and I'll make sure that, that we're going to address those sidewalks, and.
Thank you very much.
It's an important project, and there's also some on Park Street that are just horrible, so.
And you people have always been good to me when I come around asking for something, and I hope, well, Lebanon.
No, we wouldn't want to get Abe Lincoln upset, so.
And I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ron.
I've done a lot of work for the city beyond and above my call.
Well, thank you for coming in and.
Hold on a second.
Oh, sure.
Okay. I broke open between a $40,000 and $80,000 local burglary ring back in the 80s, and it was a friend of mine wanted me to turn back, turn my back out of Griggs while I was working for Pinkerton, and I went above and beyond the call of duty there, and I worked with, I had to go through Sweet Home because they wanted a chainsaw, and I got it for them. And it was the right one, and they raided, raided the old motel that used to sit across the road there at Airport.
Mm-hmm.
And they raided that and got between $20,000 and $40,000 worth of stolen property out of there, and then they said that between another $20,000 and $40,000 was already resold down to Eugene Auction Yard. So I think I did a good job there, but.
Very good.
If I, if I see something happening, I call you guys.
Is that the old Jolly Motel?
Yep. I'm a, I'm a good citizen that tries to get somewhere.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron, appreciate you coming in.
And I ran for mayor in '04.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Competition.
Good one.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Okay, seen it, items from press?
I don't know.
Nothing? Okay. Next scheduled meetings, we have August 10th is our regular session, and September 14th the regular session.
Please, please.
Meetings adjourned.